Please rise.
We gather here today as members of City Council, we trust that we are ever mindful of our service to fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, applying our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, the clerk will call the roll.
Mayor Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Thomin.
Here.
Ms. Ketchum.
Here.
Mr. Sklavenakis.
Here.
Mr. Thorngate.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as received? Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side, motion passes. All right, it brings us to the mayor's report. Just a couple of things, and then I have a couple invited guests. We have some appointments. Let's just start with the appointments. I see Haley Steed in the audience. Haley is my nominee to join the Arts and Cultural Commission. Would you like to introduce yourself for a few minutes, Ms. Steed? And you don't have to, but we would love to hear from you. Yes, please do. All right. Just come up to the podium. Yeah. Well, you know.
Friendly faces in the audience, so that makes me incredibly happy. Hi, I am Haley Steed. I've been a resident of Wheeling for about the last 10 years. I'm currently working with Americor, stationed at Wheeling Heritage, and writing content focused around cultural tourism, trying to engage people outside of the Ohio Valley with Wheeling. My background is in marketing and communications. I've been in that field in graphic design for like 12 years or so, and I got my BA in cultural studies. So I'm very invested in both arts and culture, and I would love the opportunity to kind of enhance the commission with whatever I can bring to the table and help give Wheeling the platform she deserves for her citizens to show off their talents and then for people to appreciate what Wheeling has to offer.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Steed? All right, is there a motion to approve her nomination to the Arts and Cultural Commission? Is there a second? All righty, any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion passes. Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. Stay there, we're gonna get a quick photo. Something else I didn't tell you. All righty, I have one other appointment. A city council is afforded one of the board seats on the Board of Wheeling Heritage. There's a vacancy in that seat, and I would, I've nominated Vice Mayor Thomin to serve on that board in our capacity, so I'd appreciate a motion to approve that nomination. Any discussion?
Mayor, I believe Wheeling Heritage removed the City Council Board seat earlier this year by vote of the Wheeling Heritage Board of Directors. Am I correct?
Okay, well, I guess I'd, is that what... All right, well, there is no such nomination. All right, all right. So the current vacancy seat was just extended, then?
We have a vacancy that's not going to fill.
Okay. All right, I stand corrected, then. All right. All right. I stand corrected, and thank you for being here, Mr. Frye, although I see Mr. Chenal in the back as well, who could clarify. And the only thing is, over the last, of course of the last year, our local Human Rights Commission has expressly urged City Council to pass what is commonly referred to as the Crown Act. Rabbi Leaf is here from that Commission. I asked him to just say a few words about it, and also Bishop Cummings is here from the State Human Rights Commission to say a few words as well. So I just asked if you would both keep your comments within the three-minute range that we usually forward to members of the public afterwards, but thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much. I'm here in my capacity as vice chair of the Human Rights Commission, and some of my fellow commissioners are also here this evening. When this issue first came up, I also shrugged my shoulders and said, "So what? What's the big deal?" And I did not understand the question. And over the past few meetings of our commission, we have seen studies and we have seen evidence and also got a much clearer definition of what exactly is involved. For me, the issue comes down to a simple question, and I will pose it to all of you. How many of you were picked on in elementary school for bringing matzah during Passover for your lunch? I'm guessing none. How many of you were given a hard time for missing on the Jewish High Holy Days? Betting none. How many of you were beaten up on the school playground for having murdered Jesus? I'm assuming not. Just because it didn't happen to you doesn't mean that it isn't happening. The question of discrimination for me was one of discrimination because I was Jewish. That doesn't make it more or less relevant than someone else's experience. The question was asked by some of the council members in the previous iterations of your discussions. Are we coming up with a solution looking for a problem? And I think that the answer is twofold. One, because this wasn't covered under discrimination statutes beforehand, who would have filed anything to complain about it since it wasn't something protected? And second, and far more relevant in terms of my own personal experience and I suspect many of the folks across our community, is it takes a lot to complain of discrimination. Usually, we just assume that's just the way things are, and we do our best, those of us who've been discriminated against, to try and continue on with our lives. To challenge an authority, especially for a school child or an employer by their employee, is very risky and begs more attention and more singling out and more reminders that you're the minority. Just because this isn't an issue for me personally doesn't mean it isn't an issue for our city. Understanding the question, I was confused by some of the language early on about protected hairstyles. It's protective of the hair. I didn't realize that. I didn't understand since my hair is different than the hair we're talking about. Many of our African-American neighbors wear their hair in particular styles, particularly braids or dreadlocks or having a rag covering a tight bandana, to hold the hair itself in place. That's what's being protected, is the hairs which are apparently, studies have shown, very fragile, and our African-American neighbors are worried that their hairs will break. And when they appear with natural hairstyles such as these, protective hairstyles, they're often singled out for discrimination. The issue is potentially in the workplace, but even more so in the school system. 66% of young black girls report being discriminated against before age 12 on the basis of their hair. That was in a national study. Black schoolchildren are missing school a week to a week and a half more than their average white peers because they are afraid, because they can't get their hair to be controlled to go to school, and they know that if they put on a tight-fitting durag, they'll be accused of dressing like a gangster. That's what's really at stake, is can someone else's pain be a concern if it isn't also our pain? If we don't see it happening, if it hasn't been happening to us, should we still care about it? And my answer, as an individual, as a citizen, as a rabbi in our congregation, and certainly as the vice chair of our Human Rights Commission, is absolutely yes. This is something that is happening, and we should be watching out for the well-being of our neighbors. None of us should have to be in a wheelchair to think there ought to be a ramp. None of us should have to be discriminated against to think that people should be able to live their lives in peace and safety, and truly, in this case, in health. I would liken it to a young girl in school who develops earlier than her peers and needs to wear a sports bra at a gym class. Should she be made fun of for this, or should she be allowed to participate? If she wants to run and jump and so on and so forth with her peers, this is protective of the health and well-being of the individual, and as such, ought to be protected. And as a last comment, and I'm happy to take questions, it occurs to me that this is, of course, open to the long-time question on all human rights issues. Isn't it a choice, right? Skin color's not a choice, disability's not a choice, gender's not a choice. This is, this is something that the person could just change their hairstyle and then not be discriminated against. And I would caution you that religion is a choice, and it's long been on the protected list, as well as it should be. So I, on behalf of our committee, urge you to strongly consider passing this. I think that the absence of evidence so far of people complaining of discrimination is definitely not, in this case, the evidence of the absence of the pain and suffering of some of our neighbors.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Rabbi Leaf?
Rabbi, I just want to, I want to thank you for being the first person so far on this topic to come forth and offer a logical explanation as well as a real perspective. I appreciate that, helps a lot.
Thank you.
And I wish we could have had you come have this explanation sooner.
I, I hear you, and I truly mean that I genuinely sympathize. I read your comments and other council people's comments as this discussion was unfolding. I also didn't understand exactly what the issue was, and we on our commission heard studies, read studies, heard from people who've experienced these issues. A school child whose hair was cut by a teacher because the teacher thought that the dreadlocks the child was wearing were disrespectful. If, if a Jewish child went to school and was told to take off their yarmulke, we'd all agree that seems inappropriate. And so when people get discriminated against, and it isn't our personal issue, we don't always get the resonance. And it took me a while, too. And once that was explained to me, all of a sudden, in my mind at least, it clicked. Just because this isn't an issue I've ever dealt with, I've had the same dopey haircut since I was three years old, doesn't mean that other people aren't dealing with a very real issue. They feel afraid to complain about. Those are precisely the folks who ought to be protected by us, the majority, the rest of the community, watching out for the well-being of our neighbors, particularly our neighbors who are vulnerable by virtue of being in a minority.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Bishop Cummings, if you would please come forward as well. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir, to everyone. I think the rabbi did so well. I don't know what I need to say, but I am the chairman of the Human Rights Commission for the state of West Virginia. This did come before us, and we did pass it unanimously. I do want you to know, I guess the rabbi took you to temple, I guess I'll take you to church, and for 30 seconds. Dr. D.L. Moody said that the same God that you pray to after you fall in the ditch was there before you fell in the ditch, and if you would have talked to him first, you wouldn't have fell in the ditch. Well, I want you to know that this is a preventive problem, and so what you're saying by passing the Crown Act is that we want to make sure that everybody is treated well. If we really want to be a diverse community and we want to make everyone feel welcome, then this is something that we must do. Sadly, there was a young man who played for his local high school team, and his white coach made him cut his dreadlocks if he wanted any time to play. That, if you would have said that to anybody else, to something that was culturally significant to them, it would have been immediately saw was wrong. But because it was his hair, the coach felt he had the right to tell them what to do. Obviously, that's not true, and I hope that you will show that by your vote on the Crown Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Before go, any questions for Bishop Cummings?
Thank you so much, sir.
All right.
And I have one other item on the mayor's report, and this is, last fall, one of our beloved community partners celebrated its 50th anniversary here in the city, and I intended to recognize the Community Foundation of the Upper Ohio Valley then, failed to do so, and I'm going to blame it on my 11-month toddler who's been keeping me busy, but it was on my desk and I just forgot to do it. So with that said, we've been very fortunate and discreet to have, for the last 50 years, the Community Foundation, and Susie Nelson's here, and Susie's been the executive director for, I forget how many years, correct me now? 16, wow. We've worked with them actually most recently. They helped us allocate some of the ARPA funds for which we're very grateful. They're a central force of a lot of the good that is Wheeling, so we really appreciate all that you do. And I do have a proclamation to read, but if you want to say any words as well afterwards, you're quite welcome to. It's entirely up to you, but if you bear with me, I'll get to the proclamation. Whereas the Community Foundation for the High Valley was founded in 1972 in the city of Wheeling, and on November 6th of 2022 marked its 50th anniversary. And whereas the Community Foundation was established by forward-thinking local business professionals interested in creating a charitable organization designed to be a perpetual source of philanthropy in the region. And whereas the mission of the Community Foundation is to enhance the vibrancy of the Upper Ohio Valley through meaningful charitable actions, strategic and initiative-driven investments, and thoughtful community leadership. And whereas, since its establishment, the Community Foundation has worked with hundreds of donors to create nearly 300 charitable funds which are designed to do good. And whereas, over the past 50 years, the Community Foundation has made more than $300 million in grants and scholarships in the region. Now, therefore, I, Glenna Feller Jr., Mayor of the City of Wheeling, do hereby proclaim January 17th of 2023 as Community Foundation for the Upper Ohio Valley Day. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Wheeling to be fixed here, too, on the 17th day of January of 2023. Glenna Feller Jr., Mayor of the City of Wheeling. I thank you very much, Susie.
Would you like to say anything? If not, you don't have to. But we're gonna do a photo afterwards, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the recognition, and we really do value our partnership with the city of Wheeling. A lot of what we do couldn't be done without good partners. And my board chair is here with me tonight, Christine Molnar, who's been board chair for several years, and also Director of Development, Nick Musgrave. So on behalf of the Community Foundation, thank you for the recognition.
I thank you. Now, the three of you coming up will get a photo. All right, and the favorite part of Mr. Palmer's ice? That concludes my mayor's report. All right, it brings us to the clerk's report.
There is no clerk's report today.
All right, it brings us to unfinished business.
An ordinance of the Council of City of Wheeling vacating and abandoning a portion of Economy Street at the right-of-way adjacent to lots 201 and 197, as shown on the plot of David M. Alexander's Second Edition to Gregsville in the city of Wheeling, and authorizing the city manager to execute such quick claim deeds to implement this abandonment.
I move to adopt the ordinance.
Any discussion? All right, please record your votes. Motion approved.
An ordinance of the Council of City of Wheeling approving Wheeling Heritage request for American Rescue Plan Act funds, ARPA funds, in the amount not to exceed $750,000 for retail center expansion project, authorizing the allocation and transfer of such funds from the city's ARPA allocation to Wheeling Heritage, and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents, agreements, et cetera.
Move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, please record your votes. Motion approved by vote of five to two.
An ordinance of the Council of City of Wheeling approving Ohio County Public Library request for American Rescue Plan Act funds in the amount not to exceed $75,800 for a tablet lending program, an auditory may-be upgrade project, authorizing the allocation and transfer of such funds from the city's ARPA allocation to the Ohio County Public Library, and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents, agreements, et cetera.
Move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I'll just say, I appreciate everything the library does. I think the library's a great asset to our community, and thank you to all the folks that work there for everything you do to the community.
Any other discussion? All right, please record your votes. A motion approved.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $15,420 with CT Consultants of Mentor, Ohio, for the professional engineering services for a splash pad to be charged to the project fund.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Actually, someone did sign up to speak on that topic, and in fairness, I will ask for a motion to exit the regular order of business to permit, to allow public comment on this topic.
I'll make a motion to exit the regular order of business to allow public comment.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion passes. And I apologize for that. That was my oversight.
These splash pads at the Heritage
If you would state your name and address, please, you have three minutes.
Julia Chaplin, 23 Fieldcrest Avenue, Wheeling, West Virginia. These splash pads at Heritage Report are not a benefit for the children and their parents. They will only cause disruption during downtown events. Parents do not want their children drenched in water during festivals, parades, and city-sponsored celebrations. There are not housing projects that cater to families downtown. This would be a waste of money, time, and effort, even if you tout it as a downtown attraction. They are a topic to gain recognition for politicians. You have been totally neglecting the Fulton area and middle-income area playgrounds. These splash pads are for publicity. The sidewalk up National Road toward Wheeling has been blocked off for, due to safety issues and disintegration. Nobody's even addressed any of this, yet you're pouring out endless amounts of money to Rosemary and Child Thalman's wards. I, I can't see where this has anything to do with what Wheeling needs. As a parent, a grandparent, I can't imagine downtown splash pad attracting people. And I see where you're wanting to put it into Warwick and into Grandview, but what about the other wards? These are places where you've already invested money, and you're not spreading it out evenly to all the wards. You're concentrating on certain wards, and I think that is very destructive to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to resume the regular order of business?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Oh, no, not on that motion. I apologize.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion passes. Has a motion been made to approve this ordinance?
It has.
And seconded?
Seconded.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to respond to that, that, first of all, I didn't really plan on voting for this, but second of all, I find it very offensive and quite frankly, factually wrong that we're not investing in all of our awards. In fact, Ward Two is probably the largest recipient of the million-dollar demolition budget that we received, which was paid for. I can tell you that Fulton's not being neglected. In fact, Fulton, right now, has a discovery and process underway to look at a playground refreshment in Fulton as we speak. We've been talking about that. And quite frankly, when I take my kids to the waterfront in Pittsburgh or places like that, we love splash pads. So, that's all. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion?
Let me just add to what Councilman Seiler said. A, on the suggestion that money is going unfairly towards, I think if you look at the money spent, it is a very broad distribution of funds spent throughout the wards of this city. And recreation is something in particular that the city council has made a priority, and its predecessor made a priority. When we ran for office, six and a half, seven years ago, we campaigned on restoring our playgrounds, and a lot of people laughed at us and said, "Kids don't use playgrounds anymore." Well, that was patently wrong. What we found was that kids didn't use the playgrounds that looked like they were installed in the late 80s and had rusted. Every place we've replaced a playground, the kids use it. We still have a couple on our list, but I don't know the exact number, but we've placed far more than three-quarters of the city's playgrounds in the six and a half years that I've been in office. And splash pads are something that have been identified to us and to our recreation staff as something that kids like. You know, they weren't around when I was a kid, so I don't have any personal experience on splash pads, but they've been advised of us as an attraction and something that, you know, kids like and families like. So I see splash pads as just an extension of playgrounds and another way for kids to be outside more and off their couches and in front of their, in front of their iPads. So to me, I mean, I think, I'd like to see a splash pad in every ward, and I think, you know, that's something for future councils to consider, but we have several on the table now, and I think they're both going to be positive additions, and we encourage folks to vote for this. Any other discussion? I have one more comment, Mayor, actually. You know, again, I said I was originally not going to vote for this, but clearly, it's been my experience that when we take my family to places that have splash pads, it brings a lot of joy and happiness to my family, and I see a lot of other people with a lot of joy and happiness running through those things and experience that. So in the interest of trying to help maybe some people in the city of Wheeling here find some joy and happiness, I'm going to change my opinion on that and encourage everybody here to vote for this.
Hey, Councilman, there's a splash pad in Ward Two on the island for the last decade or so.
There is, right on the pool. Yep. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
Any other discussion? All righty, please record your votes. Mr. Palmer? Is that a yes vote, Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
A motion approved.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $102,356.93 with Southeastern Equipment Company of Cambridge, Ohio, for 2022 Case 321F compact wheel loader to be charged to the general fund.
I would move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, please record your votes. Motion approved.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $20,000 with GovPilot of Madaskin, New Jersey, for an annual account subscription to be charged to the general fund.
Move for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Any discussion? Please record your votes. A motion is passed.
That concludes unfinished business.
All right, thank you. Brings us to items held over. We have the Hall of Fame minutes from November 8th of 2022, and the Great Living Sports Entertainment Authority minutes from November 29th of 2022. Is there a motion to accept those as received?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion passes. Brings us, remarks from members of council. Look to my left today, Mr. Palmer.
I'm Mr. Thorngate. Yes, sir. I'm Mr. Vice Mayor.
I'm Mr. Sklavenakis.
Ms. Ketchum?
Yes, just briefly, I had the honor of attending the annual Martin Luther King Jr. celebration that was held over the weekend. It was incredible, an incredible weekend of events. I want to thank the MLK Committee for hosting that event, the Black Student Union at Wheeling University for hosting, for being part of that event. That was really exciting, and to congratulate the winners of the Rosa Parks Award and the MLK Award. Sheila McGee, Becky Schilling-Rodocker of the Soup Kitchen, they both won the Rosa Parks Award, rightfully so, and CJ Goodwin and Pastor Jerry Moore were awarded the MLK Award. So very exciting stuff and an event that I look forward to every year. So thanks to that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Seiler.
Don't say.
All righty, that brings us to report of committees. I see that there are none. That brings us to report of the city manager, Mr. Heron.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier today, the mayor asked that I give an update on a couple of city service fee projects that are in the works, one of which is the sidewalks on Wheeling Hill. About eight or nine months ago, the city hired an engineer, Alpha and Associates, out of Morgantown to look at various options to repair the sidewalk on Wheeling Hill along National Road. They came up with four or five different ideas on how to, how to deal with that issue, all but one of which was extremely expensive and dealt with putting the sidewalk where it is now, which would have caused additional construction as a result of retaining walls that are failing, canter levering the sidewalk, et cetera. And I think that those options were in the $4 to $5 million range. But one of the options that was looked at was moving the sidewalk to the north side of National Road along the hillside. And that alternative actually ended up being the second least expensive, but the most practical. And at the time, that cost estimate to do that work was around $900,000. We submitted the $900,000. We submitted, uh, the plan to the West Virginia Department of Highways because it is their right of way and it would require a narrowing down the two lanes that go up the hill on National Road, um, westbound. Uh, the DOH reviewed the study and came back with several comments. Those comments were then forwarded back to Alpha and Associates. They addressed the comments, submitted those back to the city, and I submitted those to the, the West Virginia Department of Highways, uh, last month. Um, a couple of things with that. One, based on the comments and the, the retaining walls that would need to be done on the north side, uh, the cost estimate went from $900,000 to $1.3 million. Uh, and the West Virginia Department of Highways is interested in this project, but rather than narrowing the lanes, which they are not interested in doing, what they are doing is they've requested a planning study with the, uh, central office in Charleston to reduce the two lanes to one lane and allow the sidewalk to be constructed on the north side of, uh, of the road. So, I think it's exciting. I mean, it's a great, it's a great option to address this issue. I don't think that it's practical or cost-effective to replace the sidewalk as it is now just because of all the damage that's been done below it. So, that project is moving forward. There are city service fees set aside for the project. Now, it's just a matter of getting approval back from the West Virginia Department of Highways to coordinate a project. In addition to that, they are also developing a project to stabilize the hillside. That work was in the planning stages prior to us making the presentation of the sidewalk because, uh, and it was delayed because of the I-70, uh, um, work and the fact that that was a detour route. So, there's the potential for two very nice projects to be constructed in that area, one by the DOH and one by the city, which would address the sidewalks on National Road.
And Mr. Herron, I do have a question. This may be too early to ask this, but if the sidewalk is moved across the street to the north end, what would happen to, to the current sidewalk? Would it be removed or what, what's the process there?
It would be demolished. Demolished and then some type of, uh, barrier put, put along the, the road.
Uh, first of all, thank you for that update, but just a quick question. Do we know why, uh, normally sidewalks on National Road are the responsibility of DOH in that situation? For some reason, the city agreed to take ownership of these sidewalks in the seventies, I believe. Do we know why exactly that happened?
I do not know why.
Okay. Anyone in the room know why? Because it wasn't a very smart decision in hindsight, but, uh, we can, uh, we can revisit that at a later time because, uh, but obviously it's a, it, it's an important sidewalk. It connects the Fulton neighborhood to North Park and the rest of, of the city. So, we had to see that sidewalk through. So, thanks for that update.
Mr. Herron, I do have one more question. We talked about retaining walls potentially failing. Is there any fear in any of these studies or whatnot that the road would fail? Um, at, at this point, uh, there is not. Um, the DOH has also gone, uh, in, underneath the sidewalk and looked at the issues. They're not concerned about the road failing at this time, but at some point in time, when the sidewalk is demolished, uh, there's going to have to be some retaining work done, but it's going to be related to the road, not to the sidewalk, which will be DOH's responsibility. Uh, the other project, um, is the painting of the Tunnel Green Bridge, which is the railroad bridge across Route Two and, and Route 250. Um, we did have that bridge tested for lead-based paint and then we also invited, uh, a contractor who we're very familiar with, who has done all of our, not all, the vast majority of our water tank painting. So, they're very familiar with steel painting. That person spent the entire day in, in Wheeling last week. Uh, so he is developing specifications associated with the painting of that, uh, bridge, which will, which will require sandblasting, uh, and then repainting it, uh, with, uh, you know, a normal bridge-type, uh, steel bridge-type paint. I've also alerted the Arts Commission that this project is moving forward and for any type of ideas they may have for a decorative, um, approach to, uh, the painting of the bridge. Uh, but I would anticipate that we, uh, will have that bridge ready for, uh, specification and bidding sometime in late February, early March. And then, uh, Mayor, also I would respectfully request an executive session to discuss property acquisition this evening in relation to the Life Hub project.
Okay. Thank you. A question for the city manager.
Mr. Herron, are there any updates on the, uh, Wheeling Pitlofts building? Do we know, if we talk to that developer, do we know if that's going to get moving soon? Or we still have a high hope that that's going to, um, happen?
The, um, the conversations that I've had with the developer, uh, were prior to Christmas and there is still, um, some issues with, um, uh, costs associated with, uh, you know, the pandemic and supply chain issues as well as, uh, the interest rate environment has changed, uh, since the project began. Uh, so that's causing some concerns. Uh, but, uh, in, in, uh, cooperation with the tax income refinancing bond that was just issued by city council at the end of November, uh, the contractor did submit a draw schedule, which indicates that the project will begin in February. Uh, and I don't know if it's going to begin in, in, in totality, uh, but the, the developer has represented that they will begin at least , uh, working on the project sometime in February. That's what they've indicated to me. Obviously, this is January, it's not February, so we'll see how that goes. But the city does have its incentive package funded and that funding is based on a draw schedule, which I won't go into here, but it's very beneficial to the city that we are able to borrow money on a draw schedule. It's also beneficial to the developer, but the, the downside of that is that that draw schedule has to be adhered to. Uh, so there is some pressure and, uh, some deadlines that need to be met. If they're not met, we'll certainly take a step back and, and see how we can, uh, deal with that. But at this point, those deadlines are still in place.
Okay. And are, are we encouraging the developer to try and do whatever they can to at least, uh, I'm assuming they're already doing this, but figure out, um, you know, get through some of those floors? I mean, if we can't do the entire project and it's in entirety, I just want to, I just, you know, just as a reminder that we built a parking garage for specifically to support the, the housing at this building. And, uh, that was our biggest concern going forward when we, when we started talking about funding that garage was what if this project fell through? And, you know what, that, it's going to be a beautiful parking garage, but I have some major concerns if we don't get that place moving soon.
The, the, the phasing of the project would not involve, uh, according to developers, not cost-effective to do certain floors. Um, but the phasing would be to start the mechanical, start the, uh, finish the demolition and, you know, and do, um, the work that addresses the entire building and not just certain floors. And there's, you know, he's indicated that's just not cost-effective to do it that way.
I just, I just, you know, kind of want to be a jerk for a minute, but point out that it's not cost-effective for us to have a brand-new parking garage over there without hundred-some units there for people to, to park there. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I have one question, city manager. Uh, we voted tonight to continue with a subscription to a program that I think is very effective in the city GovPilot. Is there a way to audit previous year's data to send to members of council to see what kind of tickets were? Any trends and themes that we could pull from that?
Um, I'll, I'll check in. I believe so, yes. And I'll check into that and make sure that we can, uh, if, if we can, we'll make sure we get that information to you. But, uh, but I'm 99% sure that we can do that absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you, everyone. It brings us to report of other officers. Uh, we have the Historic Land Wars Commission Minutes from October 6th of 2022, uh, Human Rights Commission Minutes from December 6th of, of 2022, uh, Hall of Fame Minutes from December 13th of 2022, and Center Market Commission Minutes from December 6th of 2022. Is there a motion to hold those over?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those post same time, motion passes. It brings us to petitions of redress for grievance.
There are none.
Number eight, petitions of all other kinds.
There are none.
Alright, I, number nine, um, I, I numberize it as original propositions.
An ordinance of the Council of the City of Wheeling amending and reenacting Article 169 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Wheeling entitled Human Rights Commission. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into negotiations and execute the appropriate documents to extend the service of CT Consultants for 12 months to continue providing flow monitoring, data management, equipment operations, and maintenance in accord with the city's Phase Two status and Phase Three wastewater system improvements. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds the amount of $25,094.49 with Dell Technologies of Round Rock, Texas for the Police Department mobile data terminals and drone PCs to be charged as city service fee and then reimbursed by the fiscal year 2022 COPS Technology Program, Wheeling Law Enforcement Technology Program. A resolution of the Council of the City of Wheeling approving the, and authorizing the supplemental to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, the HUD, of substantial amendments to the fiscal year 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021 annual action plans for the use of CDBG funds.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Alright.
The Human Rights Commission ordinances, it, it is up for a first read tonight, not a second read, so we're not going to vote on that tonight. But you will have a chance after the meeting to speak on that topic. Yes, a motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Alright, please record your votes.
Resolution's approved.
A resolution to the Council of the City of Wheeling authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute any and all documents, uh, necessary and associated for the purposes of the city to participate in a non-state-owned bridge repair program.
Move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Alrighty, please record your votes. Resolution's approved.
And that concludes original propositions.
Alright, thank you.
Hi, my name is Claire Kelly and I'm a microbiology major here at West Liberty and I want to show you what it's like to be in this program. First off, we're going to head into biological chemistry with Dr. Schmidt.
Now, in looking at the reaction that leads to the formation of this bond, we see that water is released. Does anyone know what kind of reaction this would be where water gets released?
The microbiology program is a really interesting program that prepares you for a wide range of future career paths within the biological sciences. Outside of the required courses, there are really interesting electives that you get to choose from that you wouldn't really get the opportunity elsewhere. For example, I took a fluorescence microscopy course with Dr. Ozempa where we had full access to a research-grade fluorescence microscope and assisted Dr. Ozempa on research he'd been working on. So, I chose this major as microbiology was always a subject that I was really interested in school and I wanted to learn more about it. After I graduate, I want to continue further studies within the field of medical microbiology, researching diseases caused by microorganisms. Next, we're heading into animal living chemistry with Dr. Swartz.
So, it becomes, right, how you can go all those different areas. You guys have learned the rules of civic ethics back in the gentleman.
This major is good for others to consider because it provides you with a comprehensive knowledge, uh, in the biological sciences. It prepares you for a variety of future career paths. Many go on to apply for med school, PA school, or PT school, or postgraduate studies in microbiology. In addition to that, with the skills you learn in labs, you, throughout the major, you are also very employable for work in a lab setting. So, now I'm going to head into the lab and work on some of my research project. There are so many research opportunities available as an undergrad, both working with professors and conducting independent research. I work with Dr. Schmidt's lab, researching a novel family of antibiotics called rosazamycin, and how one Francisella tularensis gene in particular plays a role in rosazamycin susceptibility. It is a really unique op, to have these opportunities as usually you wouldn't get to do this work until postgraduate studies. Having this experience really gives you a leg up when applying to various graduate programs and jobs. Students in the microbiology program are incredibly lucky with the professors in the biology department. Every single one of them really cares about the success of their students and are very passionate about the subjects they teach. With the small class sizes, they really get to know each and every student and are there to help you when you need I'm also on the women's soccer team here at West Lib and now it's time for practice. Being a student athlete here at West Liberty has been an incredible experience. It definitely comes with its challenges of time management and juggling both college work and training, but there is a lot of support on both sides to make it work. Being a student athlete here means becoming part of the community and being far away from home, as I'm from Ireland, is really important for me. West Liberty really has become a home away from Thanks for checking out the program with me today. For more information, look at our website.
Hi, my name is Oceanne Smith. I'm a community arts major at West Liberty University and today I'm going to show you what it's like to be in my program. So, starting off today, we're going to go into my CEP practicum class.
So, what I would like us to do today is, um, the creation of a button. So, if you had to create your own button reflecting your practicum experience so far, what would it say and why?
Some of the best parts of the program so far have been the friends that I made and the experiences we get to share both on and off of campus. Because it's a growing program, the community arts majors are very close-knit, as well as the entirety of the community education program. So, it's great to be sharing these experiences with people that I call friends rather than just a classroom full of students. I would encourage others to consider community arts because you don't have to know what you want your future to look like at first. There is a lot of room to explore and grow in this program in order to find your perfect fit in terms of career path. It's designed to have flexibility and the ability to be tailored to your personal interests. And the coordinating director, Dr. Miriam Roth Douglas, is an amazing educator and passionate about the success of her students.
My poem just says creativity lives everywhere. At my practicum site at the Stifel Center, um, I've been really pushed to develop my creativity, um, on my own. And then I just put some little cute little decorations around it just because I felt like it.
Now, we're heading into my community empowerment and engagement class.
We'll do a little warm-up, a brainstorm competition regarding, um, some of the things we've worked on in our previous session. I would like to see which group is able to write down the most ideas and concepts in 90 seconds.
The community arts program at West Liberty is based on a lot of problem and project-based learning. Um, rather than standard tests, we get to apply the information we learn in class to problems and projects in the community. Um, our most recent project has been with Grow Ohio Valley in downtown Wheeling. Their mission is focused around food security and food sovereignty, a problem that Wheeling has been struggling with for a long time. Our job this semester is to come up with possible community projects that can go into the 17th Street Building that they recently purchased and are trying to transform it into some kind of community center that will really benefit downtown Wheeling and meet the needs that the Wheeling area has. So, now we're in the Arts and Ed Center to work on my scale model project. On campus, we have the Center for Arts and Education. Um, I think it's one of the best resources that we have here at West Liberty. It comes into play a lot in the community arts program, as you can imagine. The Center for Arts and Education is a maker space that we have here on campus where you have access to sustainable found materials and creative elements to help craft projects. It's also a great area for creatives to go and work on their passion projects. In one of my CEP classes, we currently have a group project going on. We are working on a scale model for our proposed ideas to go into the 17th Street Building at Grow Ohio Valley. For our project, we hope to create a space for locals selling product to connect with graphic designers in order to design and, um, create packaging and branding for their products. And we also want to leave room to work in internship opportunities for West Liberty's VCD program. So, now we're at the Stifel Center for Fine Arts for my off-campus practicum in Wheeling. Currently, I am doing my off-campus practicum with the Stifel Fine Arts Center. It is a community art center that acts as a gallery as well as, uh, an art hub for local artists. They also offer classes and art workshops to the public, but currently they are having their holiday art show in sale and it was a really great learning experience to be able to be involved in the setup of that. I chose this program because when I came to West Liberty, I didn't really have a clear picture of what I wanted to do, except that I love the arts and I wanted to be in a position where I could surround myself by the arts and other artists. When I finished my degree, I hoped to work in some kind of community art center, a gallery, or an art museum, um, ultimately somewhere that I can continue working on my craft as well. Thanks for checking out the community arts program. For more information, go to our website.
Hi, everybody. My name is Max Kellis. I'm a junior here at West Liberty and I'm a general business student. Today, I'm going to show you what it's like to be in this program. We're heading into my first class today, which is going to be management.
We were looking at organizational structure and culture. So, last class, we actually focused on how organization assess.
on how organization assess their environment, right?
The general business program at West Liberty is honestly a great experience. It prepares business students for the real world, and there's everything from management classes to international business, to marketing, and any sort of, I guess, sect of business that anyone would want to go into, West Lib offers. I think that the relationship between the teachers and the students is really unique. Because of our smaller class sizes, the teachers are able to give students a more one-on-one personal experience, and I think that's really tailored towards the student to benefit the students. Another unique thing about West Liberty's business program is they actually offer all the classes online, so you can either choose whenever you're registering for your classes. You can choose some online classes, some in person, or you can do all of one or all of the other, and that makes it great, I think, for students. I've been commuting this semester, so it's been a little bit more difficult, so the online classes have definitely made that easier. So I'm headed into my second class for today, which is Intro to General Business with Ms. Rocky.
We are going to continue with Chapter 3, which is the different ways that you can start small businesses.
Somebody should definitely consider a general business degree at West Liberty. It definitely leaves a lot of doors open, a lot of possibilities. I personally chose general business because I wasn't exactly 100% sure what I wanted to do with my life, and I wanted to stay kind of closer to my hometown of Wheeling. After I graduated, I could probably go into any field I'd like to. I hope to go into marketing and do marketing for some sort of company. I think I'm good with people. I like to talk to people. So those are my specific aspirations. Now we're heading into my advising session with my advisor, Dr. Chen.
This semester, how many credit hours are you having?
15.
15, okay. How do you feel?
I feel good. Something really special about the advising here on West Liberty's campus is the one-on-one interaction between the advisor. I had previously talked about the teacher, the teacher-student interaction, which is fantastic. It gives students a very individual learning experience, but it's the same exact thing with the advisors. My advisor is Ms. Chen, and anytime that I have issues scheduling or issues with my major or honestly anything, I reach out to her in an email, and she gets back to me. And we honestly, every time I've reached out to her, we meet the next day. She's there for, to help me with my schedule, to help me with my classes or anything, anything I need, honestly. And I really think that's special for a college to be able to have such a, such a, such a personal experience with your advisor. This is a beautiful day. I'm going to meet the guys out on the quad and play a game of cornhole. In terms of extracurricular programs on campus, I'm also a member of KDK, a local frat on campus. KDK is only here at West Liberty. We're not nationally recognized, which I think is good because it gives us more of a sense of community. And growing up in Wheeling, I have always been a homebody, and I've loved my community. And through KDK, we're able to help our community with different outreach programs. It's nice to be more community-driven, as West Lib is. Thank you all for tuning in. If you guys would like some more information, feel free to check out our website.
My name is June Bronlick, and I'm one of the students in the BABS to BSN program here at West Liberty University, and I'm going to show you what it's like to be a student here. Now we're heading off to evidence-based practice.
What do you use for communication between you and your ESPA? I know you would never call doctor or anyone, right?
So the BABS to BSN program is designed for students who have already obtained a bachelor's degree, whether that's in the arts or in the sciences, and they're looking to obtain another degree, specifically a bachelor's in nursing. The structure of the program is set up in a way that, once you're admitted into the second-degree program, you immediately go into what would be considered your junior year. So you're completing your junior year fall and spring with the traditional students. So what's going to make the second-degree program different is that your senior year will start in that summer, immediately following that junior-spring semester, and it's going to be completed in the fall, so you'd be graduating in that December. So obtaining a second degree, a bachelor's degree in science of nursing, within a year and a half. And now we're heading off to professional nursing.
So let's look at this. It's the absence of the parasympathetic ganglion cells in the sulpoosa, okay, right below the mucous membranes.
So to apply to the program, you're going to already need a bachelor's degree, whether that's in the arts or in the sciences, and there are going to be prerequisites that are required to the application process. You're going to need classes in chemistry, microbiology, anatomy and physiology, along with a write-up describing why you want to apply specifically to this nursing program and what's drawing you to be a nurse. And today is my clinical day at WVU Medicine, Wheeling Hospital. Clinical is set up in a way that you're going to go into the hospital on a weekly basis, and it's going to coincide with the rotation that you're doing and what you're learning in class, so then you're getting that hands-on experience. We do four-week rotations in medical surgical, in labor and delivery, in psych, in pediatrics. So not only are we able to get that application that we're learning in class, we are also getting the experience of a variety of different units and different areas of nursing. So I always knew that I wanted to do something in the clinical setting. My first degree was in microbiology, and at that time, when I was obtaining that degree, I didn't necessarily know what field that I wanted to go into. And I will say that COVID did play a huge role in my decision, because we saw a lot of these healthcare workers step up and put themselves out there and just ran into this pandemic head-on, and I found that to be so altruistic, and I wanted to be part of that in the future, to help those who couldn't necessarily help themselves in those moments. So I'm really happy that I decided to pursue nursing, and not only that, I'm unbelievably blessed that West Liberty offered a specific program like this. Thank you for checking out the program with me. For more information, see our website.
Hi, I'm Jane Henry Frye, and I am a math teacher at John Marshall High School in Marshall County, West Virginia. I always knew I wanted to be a teacher since I was a little girl. I remember being in the second grade, just waking up every day, knowing like I love school, I want to go to school every day, I could do this for the rest of my life, and I like the routine and the structure and just being a lifelong learner. I graduated from West Liberty in May of 2010 with my bachelor's in math education, and I got hired a month after I graduated. And I really think that it was due to having the West Liberty background on my resume. I work with students, not just teaching them math, but also trying to help develop life skills that they can take with them after high school. I love being here as a supportive role model. I am Jane Henry Frye, and I am proud to be a hilltopper.